Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call to order on October twenty ninth, Department of Public and Services meeting at ten oh one. First order of business is accept the minutes. Jim, Sam, any discussion, all in favor? Um, before we jump in, I want to let you know that we don't have Dwayne on the agenda at the moment in time, but he will be under other business because I didn't prep him about the meeting and have him have his things submitted for the agenda, or he didn't get the email to get his things for the agenda, but either way, he will be presenting whatever he needs to do under other business. Unless there's a reason you think you'd like to go earlier than other business. Okay, thank you very much.
We will.
So first, we would like to hear from the Department of Health.
Morning, everyone. Okay, so I have a few resolution requests. My first request is for reappointments to the Washington County Community Service. And these will all be folks familiar to you. Uh, Kristen Hardy works for the Washington County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Hardy. Uh, Tina McDuble, of course, from Public Health and Sue Murray. Terms are listed there. Four-year terms on the Community Services Board, and everybody has indicated a interest and willingness to continue.
We have to move to personnel?
Yes, that's a good question. So no, well, reappointments don't need to be moved to personnel?
Would I make a motion and we approve?
Jim, and then signed by Sam, any discussions, questions? All in favor?
Uh, second request is to amend the two thousand twenty-five Washington County budget to allow for acceptance of of regional bait ones in the eighty thousand and eighty five thousand.
So moved by Jim, seconded by Dana, discussion, questions? All in favor? So passes.
Their request is your request for funds to cover court orders psychiatric expenses. Um, I provided a table there in your packet. Did you show us where we are psychiatric expense line for two thousand twenty-five? The original budget amount was three hundred fifteen. And year to date, we paid three hundred and thirty-nine, six forty-eight.
Through September?
That's through August, I'm sorry. We're currently holding invoices for June, July, August, and now September. September bill just came in. So that amount, uh, June through August is two thirty-four, three twenty-five. The September bill was sixty-three thousand. So we have monthly, we're averaging approximately seventy-one thousand dollars a month for these expenses. So in any event, um, little bit more information, you've asked in the past about this, we've the year to date, these figures represent six individuals. Uh, two carried in from two thousand twenty-four, so they were already hospitalized for the end of twenty-four and then came into twenty-five. Um, average length of stay for these individuals is ninety-four days. So about three months is is the average for what it takes for restoration. And so the request, uh, again is for, um, five hundred thousand dollars, be able to pay mandated expenses.
This guy, you have a question before we just make a motion?
Are any of these individuals state ready? One stop? Are any of these individuals state ready?
State ready.
They've already had their trial, received their sentence, and are still in our facility.
These would be ones awaiting trials that that under our competency evaluation.
Once the question of competency is raised, everything stops in terms of their legal process, so they they can't be prosecuted, they can't, uh, you know, engage in in the discussions, et cetera.
Okay, Dan.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, so is this gonna be? These are mandated services, correct? So I guess my question is, is this gonna be one of those things that we approved to send to the full board, have rejected, or just, you know, what's what's the game plan, anybody? I mean, because the last few weeks we got there and we refused to pay them, saying we aren't gonna pay them. So, I mean, why you think on a committee of that's gonna be the intent?
Oh, my personal opinion, we keep saying no. And the the intent is to raise some awareness about the fact that we have no other options. So they they bottleneck us into a spot where they can just charge us whatever they want. And so what are what are our state taxes paying for?
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just asking for.
That's just my opinion.
Sheriff, what's your thoughts about?
I'm the one going to jail anyway, so hell, I figure whatever, you gotta get jail once.
You're probably gonna be incompetent, so.
Can you imagine if this all this money was used in pension before it was legal, or the effort in the smooching of the date?
Is there any state reimbursement on these invoices?
No, the statute actually says it's a charge upon the county.
They used to pay that. What is the average cost like per month on these?
Well, see if we have that, I think.
Seventy-one thousand seven fifty.
Seventy-one, seven fifty on the.
No, per person, it's like thirty thousand.
A month, oh, yes, um.
All the books a day.
It's it's around, it's, uh, the facilities have slightly different rates, and there's different facilities that they use. So the highest is sixteen hundred a day and the lowest O M H one is eleven hundred a day.
State facility, by the.
Um, so they usually averages around twenty-nine to thirty thousand a year, or a month, I'm sorry, per person.
Sixteen hundred a day.
And we're, and these are state, I'm sorry, these are state facilities that we're saying.
I'm gonna bring you to a baseball game, I'm gonna bring my own reps, and I'm gonna make my own rules, and you're just gonna pay for the hot dog and beer.
Sam.
Yes, if if the intent is, you know, we're going to, uh, we're going to deny this as a board, if that's what the intent is, they don't feel it's safe, I'm moving to get in the front to do that.
Any further discussion?
And endings, are there any people that go back?
We've looked at that, there have been a few, but it's not generally a common thing that they're refused.
So the restoration is only a word that's thrown out there to say, okay, they get the ninety days restoration, that's great, throw that down the street.
Well, when you know, once you're restored to competency, then you do come back to the community, yes, and, you know, then you face your charges.
What the average length of stay?
Ninety-four. About three months. I believe, you know, the concern that was raised, I don't know if it was last month or prior month, but it because these are mandated expenses, if they were to take funding out of our state aid that we receive, that would be a huge impact to the county, to the community, in terms of, you know, all of that funding state aid that we get goes out to non-for-profit agencies that are providing services, so that's just a caveat or concern. We don't know that they would do that, but actually.
I'm just looking for consistency, you know what we do, that's all.
Chairman Henke, and then Nate.
Just a suggestion, uh, that you're planning on not doing this. I would recommend you do it on the board. Uh, that gets more publicity and plus, we've got all the supervisors together on it, you know, that's so if you're, if that's what's in your mind, I would recommend passing it. It goes from here to finance and then, you know, put on the course, the rest of the spending, that's more like I was told, it's like I'm talking about one deal before, and should probably be more serious here. And I think that the way to do it is on the board with.
So amend the motion to move it to finance.
Nate, you have a question?
How many individuals experience go out there for restoration that end actually end up being committed on a permanent basis, first off, come back and face trial?
Very few. Yeah, very few. Most people do go through the restoration, some take longer than the three months, some take shorter, but almost all of these folks do come back and face the felony charges, these are all felony law.
Curiosity. You don't pay us at all. They release them. They haven't got competency stand trial.
We save money on the competency bill and the public.
Then we give health therapy. Eight services from other places, we're going, right?
Well, when they come back, they do face their charges, so what happens from there is really the rest of the court process, how it plays out, they may end up in state prison, they may end up you know, be here in jail or, you know, depends the charges.
You said they have, yes, they're competent to stand trial.
Right.
Yeah, if they're thrown out there before for not paying the bill, what happens to them?
I don't know that they would throw them out, but again.
Not their bill, it's our bill.
Well, yes, but they're gonna fight.
Eventually.
We, did you ask your question, Nate?
Yes.
Cassie.
Is there a percentage of them that is very competent that they plead out on the misdemeanor?
Yeah, that can happen. I don't think it happens a lot, but it can happen. Because once again, once the question of competency is raised, they cannot engage in any plea discussions.
Do you have any way to get the money back? Basically, they break the system that mean, if it should be something to catch ahead of time, if they're gonna be able to plead out, plead down to a misdemeanor, why can't that be done? Is there some way to do a step to have that done before we pay for ninety days? And to evaluations? Because then if it's a misdemeanor and then they say, well, I mean, I just guess that they said time served in the facility and.
Who declares?
Where does it begin?
Yes, so the question of competency begins, it can be raised by either the the defense or the prosecution. Or the judge could raise the question himself.
And who makes the decision?
What that triggers then is the court will order the seven-thirty examinations, we have two examiners, local examiners that do the examinations upfront. They're the ones that made a recommendation to the court after they examined the person for competency and incompetency. And then it's up to the court to make the determination. The court does not have to follow the recommendations of the exam.
Are the local examiners, local people or state players?
Uh, local people, two psychologists, mostly two psychologists, mostly, uh, Kim Brayton is a psychologist in Glen Falls and Tom Osika is a psycholog- local psychologist.
I wanna put it past state to give her the reviews to say, okay, go in, because now we're gonna pay the state people. Who it's it works.
So we have approximately four going through per year with maybe five going through per year, two from last year, four from this year. But how many get reviewed, end up with these, or are the psychiatrists reviewing it initially? Um, rejecting very few or very large numbers of applicants, we know.
The local examiner?
Yes, the local examiner.
So those are psychologists, and you're asking what percentage of?
How many cases do they get? You know how many end up in this situation, but how many cases do they review that, sorry, you're incompetent, you have these trials, okay, what your defense attorney says?
I don't know those numbers, but I can.
Are they available to?
Yes.
I would, I would like to know that as well, like, and if if they don't, if they send everybody to Central New York, then maybe we need to look at that. Because we could just have a couple of examiners that have passed the buck. I don't want my name on this picture, so we'll send it to the state and.
Is it for a bait or for a baby, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and and what what's the risk to an examiner of saying yes versus saying no later on, finding out they should have said yes?
I think we get to debate this philosophy all day because, you know, I would you know, when I was teaching tests of law, the other hardest things to discuss in in this competency business was why the state cuts it off the balance? Are you just as incapable of understanding here? You're, um, the process when you're, you're charged with a misdemeanor, you only go to jail for a year? That's, it seems fairly silly that they do that, and Cassie's point about playing out the misdemeanors. Probably, obviously, they didn't come up with it happened the first place. No, I think we be at these goings as all day. Frankly, I have.
We are, we are definitely out of topic, Chairman, but we also are learning things, and not only through this process that we get to be more exposed, which is hard for you, if you're under fire right now, these questions.
None of this is directed at you.
Please. So it's on the table to move finance. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
And then my last request is, uh, waiver request for, we had issued an RFP this summer from Court Base and Healthcare Navigators. We had received some funding from the Office of Mental Health for this purpose. And when we, uh, issued the RFP, we did not receive any satisfactory proposals. Uh, in fact, all of them, they only received two proposals and they were from out of the area, they were basically staffing agencies out of New York City that offered to find us a person who had that. Wasn't really what we were looking for, we were looking for, you know, one of our local agencies to bring this position in, have a, you know, into an existing program that would have supervisory structure, et cetera. So I'm requesting a writ of waiver, uh, for the RFP process and request permission to select a local non-for-profit mental health provider to contract for the position we would select from our different agencies that we currently hold contracts with.
Sam, any? Any discussion or questions? Is is this in your budget?
Yes, yes, we do have funds through state, state aid funds.
Just have to change the cost? Does this have to change the cost?
It shouldn't change the cost.
Either up or down.
Well, one thing works for, and there was, there was a, there were different positions you could apply for. We applied for peer in Washington County, then came out of a discussion. Although, from, you know, uh, District Attorney's Office, Public Defender, Alternative Sentencing, we had a discussion and decided to apply for a peer position. Here was one of the levels you could apply for. You could also apply for a case manager, which was a little bit more funding, or you could apply for clinician, which was a high, higher, highest level of funding. Um, what we have learned is that we do, we may have an opportunity to request one of the alternate positions. And and that, you know, that may improve, uh, the interest of our agencies in, because none of our local agencies applied for the peer position, so if we were to be able to get case management funding, which would be higher, and that's what Warren County is doing. Then potentially one of our local agencies would be interested because they did apply for the warrant, the, um, case management RFP. And then it would kind of make some sense because, as you know, our agencies serve both counties, so whoever gets selected in Warren the case manager, then if we had a case manager in Washington County, um, then that could, you know, be a nice complement and program thing. Probably lead us toward awarding it to that agency.
Any further questions, discussions? All in favor? Passes.
Good morning, nice to see you all.
Good morning.
I'm Shelley Smith, Executive Director of LEAK. And I have just two things on the agenda today, but before I go over them, I just wanted to update you a little bit on where LEAK is right now, um. I guess it may be relevant to our discussion, um. Much of our funding is tied up in the appropriations budget at federal level, majority of it. And so, uh, right now, with the government shutdown, it puts us in a very uh, difficult position, puts us in a difficult place right now, so we have recently, uh, mid-October, we, uh, laid off two employees, do not intend to bring those two back at furlough too, that we do intend to bring back as soon as we can. This is specifically related to our CSBG funding, which is what makes us a community action agency, and our WEOWA funding, which is the workforce development part, um. As far as services, what we've done, and I think that's what probably you're more concerned about here, what we've done is, um, the CSBG funded services that we have, our food pantry and emergency services like rental assistance, utility assistance, that sort of thing. We, our our food pantry is still operate fully operational, we are not pulling back on that at all. And but we have to put our emergency services on a waitlist for now. Um, officially waitlist, what I've asked our staff to do is, you know, put people on the waitlist, don't make promises, but please let me know, and if there are emerg- truly emergent needs, we're gonna take a look at the, it's on a case-by-case basis. But as I said, food pantry is still fully functional, our food pantry is funded by two primary sources other than private donations, which we do receive some. Um, one is CSBG, and the other is the contract that we have with the county, and that's one of the things that we have on the agenda today, so that's why I wanted to make sure you know that our food pantry is fully functional right now. Um, our transportation program, which we also have a contract with with the county for, is also the county-funded portion, which is senior transportation, is completely uh, functioning as usual, we have, um, stopped our CSBG-funded transportation for now. That is within, sort of within, it's not really emergent, but it is within those services, people that do not qualify for the OFA funding, but would have sought transportation with us in the past are on waitlist right now. That staff has not been impacted at all, just, um, just the services and the main reason for that piece, um, without getting into too much detail, is that the CSBG funding is not only on the table for uh, elimination at the federal level, although right now it's not looking like it will be eliminated, but at best probably flat funding from the twenty-twenty-four levels. Um, but there's no guarantee, we don't know what's gonna happen, but that fiscal year also starts October one. So we don't, we have no contract, no assurance of CSBG funding for the year that we're already in. And we're operating on reserves for that, that time, so we're just doing all we can to make sure we can maintain services until this is all resolved in whatever way it is, so.
You asked a question, the food pantry was snapped in a bit, I think, um, you expect a large increase in pantry, which may allow.
We do expect that, um, we've been meeting about that and and doing some things in preparation, so we've done some very simple things like making sure that our food, our list of local pantries and other service agencies is up to date and accurate. On making contact to those other agencies so that if we have to make a referral, we can do it. But we are also working to, uh, stock our pantry more than usual, we're doing all that we can, um. The food pantry is just going to be a real focus for the next little bit because we know people are gonna need it. It's the time of year, the the usage usually increases, uh, snack benefits, um, you know, being uh, challenged as they are right now, we know people are gonna need it more, so we we may actually increase the frequency with which people can access the pantry, it's something we were just discussing this morning, but we haven't made a final decision on that yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that before I?
Wayne has a question.
Oh, hi.
Um, which is helpful if you went through some form of a choice statement in regards to this, and maybe get the word out, you can tell her about pantry, to where the pantry are, how should we access that people I've known.
Great idea, yeah. Connect with Yomi, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Are you done?
I am done with that piece, so, um, the two things that I actually have on the agenda, one is actually the renewal of our food pantry contract with the county. I didn't print the whole contract for you because the rest of it is just contract language, what I printed were the conditions, the content. Nothing has changed from the contract that went up here. Um, but I highlighted the important pieces, this is a forty thousand dollar per calendar year contract, ten thousand dollars each quarter that we voucher for. And the conditions of that contract are, um, our reporting, like I'm doing right now, reporting number of households, individual and family served during the reporting period, new households served, and a statement of revenue and expense for the reporting period, and I'm going to apologize in advance, I did not get that for this report, if I've, and I am happy to send it along. Um, it was just totally my error with our changes and things going on right now, I just fell off my radar to ask our finance director for the report, and so I didn't want to put her on the spot, think or do it this morning. But I'm happy to send that along to you. Um, so reporting is is the, is one thing, it also gives, um, Washington County DSS access to our pantry after hours. So those are the, uh, the details of the contract, we are asking for a renewal for this next year, uh, January first, twenty twenty-six. Beginning January first, twenty twenty-six, one-year contract, and, um, as I said, this is not different from last year, it's just renewal.
You wish to add, where should you go, Sam? Questions or discussion?
Yeah, discuss.
The finances of those.
Did the good of finance or legal has to check it or is this on one? Lot of questions. Your question Scott was, did the good of finance?
It's budgeted, so I would say no.
Okay.
Uh, is this $40,000 change from last year?
No, same amount.
I'm going to bring up the location of food pantries. Yeah, because we've talked about it. Um, and now that Dwayne's on board, make it something that he would want to weigh in also. Um, right now it's in Annex Two. Um, and we had talked about maybe putting it somewhere more accessible to the public, whether it's on Main Street Hudson Falls, or if there's something available, um, where it may, might make it a little bit more accessible off the campus as well as again, your offices, right? That you think would be better for the public if they're easier access than downstairs. Um, but I don't know, honestly, I'm looking for direction on how, what the next step would be to look into that. Or if you have any suggestions.
I don't have any suggestions that don't cost money.
Right. And I think one of the challenges where I have been watching for spaces, I've got my eye on one that I would love, but it would require some renovation. Uh, but we at, or at LEAP, we would have to have the funding to get into a new space. Um, and that's, that's the big challenge. But, um, it is not off our radar. It's something we really, really want to do and are actively looking for and trying to work out. So. Okay. Keep it on our radar.
Yeah, I will. I'll see how we're going.
Yeah, so just my question, my question on is, this starts or the quarter starts from October 1st? So is it in, we do know for sure it's in next year's budget?
It is. Yeah.
Where is Annex Two?
It's the yellow building behind Annex One.
Annex One is the one with the
Annex One is the one with the stone front that used to be the house.
Where Wick was?
We're, we're public health and Wick. Wick is currently in Annex Two.
Move on to door one.
She just, uh, just parked a lot. She's out behind where the The other side of the car wash.
You can't, you can't get to it. That's going out.
Yeah. Yeah, on the backside of that maple tree over there.
Now I know exactly. Thank you.
Possibilities. But understanding that the, which means just, yeah, the red building, cheap services, so where is it easier to access? Access pantry, probably so that if you hear or attend to here. So just the thought, because if you start to think this through.
Meaning your DSS, SDF that actually access, yeah, yeah. Keep that in mind.
So moving it someplace around some, not always to this site yet, but.
You're thinking Cambridge or something.
Like.
Wait for you.
Oh, yeah, question.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure why I haven't asked this before. And Dwayne, I don't know that you have the ability to answer me right now, but if you could take it back to your team. It just occurred. Well, thank you. Um, this $40,000 that we pay for the food pantry at least. Is there any opportunity to run this cost through, uh, one of your programs so that we can get some of it back? Even at 29% safety net, it's 29% more than I have today. I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to run the $40,000 through one of, one of your programs. And I, and again, I don't need an answer right now. It's something if you could, if you could look at it. Um, I don't know why I haven't asked that before.
So if we go back in time, I believe DSS used to have a food pantry, right? You had one.
We have a bit of a skeleton one now.
Right.
But it would be interesting, even at, even at safety net levels, it's 29 more than I have. So.
No, that's, I will definitely.
Appreciate that.
So it's on the table? Need further questions? And it's not going to finance? We're just passing it here. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I do have, um, our actual reporting, the other, other reason I'm here today. So as I said, and I apologize, I don't have the, the, uh, statement, the financial statement, revenue and expense, but I will be glad to send that along to you. Our pantry usage is about, at about right now, 95% of where it was at this time last year. Um, we do see new households every month. You can see that, um, I, I often, I, it seems probably kind of a cyclical, but I'm, I'm not sure. We do continuously see new households. And then that would mean that there are some that are falling off because the overall numbers are not, they're increasing, but they're increasing at the same rate. And I'm not sure what is driving that. Um, we are seeing mostly people in the zero to 74% federal poverty level. That's the majority, about two-thirds. Um, and then 75 to 125, we have a, on occasion, we have people that are over 200%. We can, our CSBG funding can cover people up to, uh, we can use CSBG funding for anybody up to 200% of federal poverty level. For now, it used to be 125. A continuing resolution since COVID, uh, has kept it at 200%. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but that's where we are now.
Was it? Yes, it wasn't posted current.
I don't remember. I'm sorry. I've got it posted right now to my desk. I just can't pull it out of my.
You don't know if that comes with $60,000 income or if it's 120,000?
Oh, no, it's definitely closer to 60 for the, for 200%. Like, uh, for it, an individual, for an individual, I want to say it's in the twenties. Federal poverty level, but I'm not positive.
Fifteen, six, five.
Fifteen, see, I'm nineteen, it's lower even than I thought.
Two people is playing one, but fifteen, three people is six, six, fifty, four, two.
You bailed me out like this once before here. I do remember that now.
You mentioned earlier that.
No, I would assume that.
What is it currently?
Right now, right now, I, I need to visit our family once a month. It's once a month. We do, uh, refer out to, to other pantries. We are regional food bank regulated pantry. That means that, uh, what we do, uh, is give three days worth of food. Um, three meals and snacks for each member in the household. That's what, what people get. We're, we're generous with that, careful. We have converted to, um, a choice pantry, so we don't hack boxes anymore for people unless they request it. Um, they come into our pantry and are able to choose the items that they, that they want. But right now it's at once a month, but we, uh, like I said, we're looking to increase that frequency. It's just a time when I think it's needed.
Yep.
Are there any kind of levels self-reported?
Yes, self-reported.
They say.
Yep.
Yes, I just had a little pit in my stomach, just looked it up while you guys were talking. And according to this, the current CSBG poverty levels through September 30th, for one person is 31,300. But effective October 1st, it's going down to 19,563. So by them lowering that, that's going to have an impact on both of your budgets, I have a feeling.
It will. It'll decrease the number of people we can serve with that funding.
It's just, it was just, I just brought this up, just to see what, where it was going and that was interesting. That's pretty, pretty drastic change.
Yeah, things are, are kind of grim in that area right now. So.
How is that number at the 200%? Is that?
So that's, that's their poverty level? So you would take the, the 200% of that number for the maximum eligibility?
That gross, how are you getting?
I believe that's gross.
Let's, you know, double that is the.
Well, we, we came up with 15,000 and you said 30, and they're going down to 19. Hopefully.
According to the website, the CSBG levels are 31,3 going down to 19,563.
Oh, that would be 200%, that would be the 200%. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's going down to, it sounds like 125 again, which is what it used to be.
Going back to 125 October. You mark Chris.
Any questions on the pantry usage numbers or anything like that that I can eat?
I just wanted to share that, uh, obviously you get done. Um, and updates to this pantry lifting, also posted on our website and on our Facebook page. I interact with that where people can go on that and hold a current location and you could look at various food pantry. Um, food pantries based on your location at that minute in time. We've also gone through and updated the grid list that's on our website as well. So we, if you have any questions from your constituents or anybody in the public that is looking for various food pantry options, go ahead and tell them who has sources.
Thank you. I'm sure my staff knows that sort of answer.
Another question by Cassie.
All right. I just curious, do we have the other, like our town has money to see in our budget or we don't need for the closing? Pantry, I just curious, do we have any of the other? Part of our town budget?
We do for comfort food. And a point I want to make, and 90% sure I'm correct on this, I don't think they ask people's income when they come to comfort food. Sites.
I'm not sure they do.
They don't.
I'm sure they don't. And we do, we do partner with them. We lean some from them. Yeah. The, the self at, self attestation we get for income is required by regional food bank. Um, and I, this was actually one thing. With our staffing changes, I'm spending a lot more time in that suite than I usually do and a bit a little more hands-on. Um, it's been good for all of us. We have a wonderful team in that suite. I just, I'm in awe of what they do. They're, they're amazing. And, um, it's been great to, to be there and be able to work with them more and, um, where was I going with that? I'm sorry. I was, it was comfort foods and our, I don't know, I forgot what, what point I was going to make. I don't remember what I was thinking.
Shelley, I know it started at the point of your clipboard at the door for sign up for volunteer hours for event services. Or whatever, um, in the, in the future, it looks like snack would require uh, 20 hours of service or work limit a week or 80 hours a month. So in doing that, those people, again, they're volunteers.
Yes.
Right? Because they can fall back on that. So that's still going us.
Yes, absolutely. We actually were just discussing that this morning and I remember where I was going. So volunteers, that's another thing that we're working on so that we can have our, our pantry more fully staffed and take more people at a time. Uh, but what I was actually, this is the self attestation that took me there. So regional food bank requires, um, the self attestation. We are currently requesting that, I can tell every time they come to the pantry. I don't think, in my experience, but it's been a few years since I was that hands-on with RFP. But I think that they only require it once a year. So it's, it's a burden to people to have to do that. So we're kind of investigating that to make sure that we're not asking too much of people when they come in. It's just one thing we're working on. Um, so, okay. All right, we also have our, uh, every day contract. This is a much simpler version of what we usually give you. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to make it palatable and not too much in the weeds, but whatever, in, you know, what information you want is what we're happy to, happy to give. But this shows a difference between, these are the total trips and miles that we have. Um, that we've provided in the order of July to September. And it's broken down by funding source. So you can see the CSBG trips as well as the OFA funded trips. OFA is clearly the larger, larger pot and that's a, it's a big, it's a big program.
What is so unfair stuff?
It's, well, it's ADRC now, right? Am I, oh, it's Office for AG. It is Office.
Oh, Mr. AG is okay.
Yeah. I almost changed it on here, but I'm never sure.
Thank you.
Office of the AG, yes.
And our miles computed for a cat, so if someone gets in, goes 10 miles and another person gets in the same trip and goes five miles, it's 15 miles.
That's a very good question. I'll have to ask our transportation coordinator. Should he be security? Yeah, I.
Use miles.
That's a good question. I will find out if it's comprehensive.
Shelley, you referenced that number, you hope, do you have that through the calendar?
Yeah, one of the, yes, we do have the OFA contracts as well, but I don't usually bring that one. That's the genius budget.
But there's, there's two through the calendar though.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, and that's what, and I report on, on both of them. So that's the, this is the second of those. So this is the, this is the reporting. These are our trips for those months. And then we also are required by our, in our contract to, um, report on our outreach efforts for which required to do outreach for this program and to report on those efforts. And so those are, I have August and September specific efforts here. Um, a lot of this is flyers and program, program information. Uh, our transportation coordinator also is very hands-on going to, uh, local apartment complexes, um, the lunch service opportunities, things like that. She knows, she knows the people of Washington County, the seniors and, and is in contact with them a lot. They also do a lot of outreach at events. Um, things that aren't included here are anytime LEAP does an outreach, participates in an outreach event at all, the transportation program is included in that. So those are all, those aren't only. But we do a lot of that as well. And we do a lot of social media. I should, I should look into getting that, um, and source.
I have a fairly full, it's on a public part of the town.
Yeah, reorganization, Mark. I can look and see, I, I don't know, um, I don't know if she, our, our transportation coordinator, who, who handles this. Probably you'll focus in an area at a time, but I can look back at what we reported over the last quarters.
That people do it.
Yeah. It looks skewed. I get it. I will, I will find out if she kind of shifts focus from quarter to quarter. Thank you all very much.
A couple of quick things. Um, the first thing is to request, um, a change to our professional advisory committee. Um, it would be to remove Andrea Baxter as our professional representative and switch her over to our community representative. She has left, um, AHI, um, so she's been willing, she's willing to stay on as our community rep, uh, which is required, um, for the regulations. And then also in her place adds Sarah Dufanijan. Um, she's the AHI Adromedef Royal Health Manager, um, and add her as her professional representative. So just need to request a resolution for that.
Melissa, Sam and Jim, any questions? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next is a request to reapply for our limited services laboratory registration. This is something we have to do every two years. Um, it's a $200 fee. Um, we are required to reapply, which gives us the ability to do our necessary testing. Um, so we would like to request permission for the treasurer to issue a check in the amount of $200, um, to renew that, uh, registration for the LSL.
I'll move it.
Um, and this doesn't have to go to finance either, right?
Does that be, actually considering budget, it's just informational, she doesn't really have a mission.
Okay. And now any discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and then just a couple of program updates. Uh, we are getting closer to moving to rebelling every day. Um, we have several items that are pending from buildings and grounds that will need to get submitted, um, to the Department of Health. Um, so we, we need their approval before, uh, we can move over there. Um, so we're just waiting on those couple of things. Matt's aware, um, and he's working on, on those things and then we'll get them submitted to the state. Um, so we can receive their approval. Um, they actually had to change our operating certificate, uh, to the new address.
What's an example of? What's an example of what they need for you?
So things like they need the, that the fire system has been certified. They need electrical certification from the electrician that that's been done. They need a certificate of occupancy for the building. What else was on that list?
That's good enough. You made my point.
There's a lot of eleven things.
The Department of Health wants to have Department of Health. Our public health, let's move over if we're going up, painting the assets, don't do subject system thing, but much more dangerous. Sorry.
No, that's okay. And then the next thing is I just wanted to remind everyone, we have our last rabies clinic coming up in the year. Registration for that open today, I believe. And that is going to be November eighth at the Kingsbury Highway Garage up on Log Road. So that'll be our last one for this year. Then we'll restart those usually end of March, beginning of April next year. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
You got how many courses left before you?
I'm done.
You're done. Congratulations.
Yes, I graduated in August. Thank you very much.
Don't let it get away. You might not have an answer to this, but. And just them on the board, the outdoor writers, they, we just got those thing around that they're seeing a lot more rabies and deer this year. If there's several, he's had one run into a school down in Duchess County. They're the whole school out. We haven't typically seen rabies and deer to my knowledge. Is this anything that's on your grid area? Did anybody mention anything or?
Yeah, I did see that article and there has been discussion of it on our calls. We have not seen that in our area, but it's always something we're looking out for. And I do believe. I don't know, was it DEC put out something to the hunter, like in the hunting? World hunting organization, just for hunters to be aware of that as well. Yeah. I, I think if DEC does test any deer in our area, we don't know until court comes back, right? Just we don't notify us that they're. So we have to report, but public health usually sees your reports. We'll pay loud.
Pretty much for a month after.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know whether that was something that was worthy of local news release or.
Knock out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on to other business. Is that right?
That me? Morning everyone.
Morning.
Wayne Ron, the new commissioner of the Department of Social Services. I was thinking we'd start out and please be patient with me. This is my first HS, HS test meeting, so I'm, I'm a little bit of the ropes here a little bit. I'm very appreciative of staff and Gina and Nate and other folks that have been helping me get, we haven't been able to really focus on the job. So much is the budget aspect over the past four weeks. I think probably first off, I'd like to start with the business. We have a resolution that. We have copy to that. Okay, so. The purpose of the resolution amended twenty twenty five CSS budget to chance the funds from. A dot six zero five five daycare to cover shortfalls into eight dot six zero seven zero services from recipients title twenty. And A dot six one four zero safety net appropriations. Reduced New York State funding for daycare subsidies result in unspent appropriations that are needed to fund other programs. So in line six. The appropriation codes to be amended. Additional thirty six thousand hour increase to services for recipients. Addition to three hundred twenty four thousand dollars increase in safety net. And subtract three hundred sixty thousand decrease in daycare. Revenue codes to amend include. An addition of twenty two, three, twenty. Increase A dot six zero seven zero dot four six seven zero federal aid for services for recipients. An addition of ninety three thousand nine hundred sixty dollars increase. A dot six one four zero dot four two nine zero SN state aid for safety net. And subtraction subtraction three hundred twenty four thousand dollars a decrease in A dot six zero five five dot three seven five five. State aid for daycare.
I need a motion. Dana and then Sam. Questions, discussions now.
So I think I got it back to Becky, not timely, but there is a line missing from the resolution.
Okay.
And it's the bad news line. So when all of this, when all of this settles on these accounts in front of you. What's missing down on the revenue side is you need to appropriate to two hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for your fund balance.
I didn't put it in there, but I just didn't have it. So.
Okay.
Do we need to amend?
When you see that, when you see the finance, it'll include that additional line. Because the revenue impact is going to be made up somewhere. So that's going to be a hit to our fund balance. Because you went down three hundred twenty four thousand and only added ninety three and twenty two. That gap has got to be filled with, with our safe, with our savings account.
I appreciate that. We know we were running late. Becky was sleeping for vacation. So.
I think I got it back to her late though.
No worries.
So everybody's clear on that? The bottom three numbers sums to a negative one oh seven. That's going to. Okay, it's been used. Seconded any review discussion? Questions? All in favor?
But next way.
At one no.
One no.
Good. Next what I have here in order to. Bolster communication between the board supervisors and Department of Social Services. What I'm asking from, from you folks and this committees. And of course, I certainly don't need the answers today. But I want to make sure that we're speaking the same language. I know that we, you know, we tried to change things up a little bit in the, the budget conversations where I was bringing some of our numbers people along with me. And I think that was clear to folks. Think that the language sometimes that we speak is not the same that you may speak. We tend to speak in program language. You folks are forced to folks, are forced to talk in, in numbers, money. So what I'm looking for from this committee or the board supervisors is please tell me what you're looking for. Are you looking for certain data? For example, homeless data, number of days in hotels. Number of children related cases in, in child support collection or in. Support services or whatever that may be is, you know. Please let's have some conversations to figure out how I can get the information that you want to know to you in a timely fashion. Or each meeting. And I think the other discussion that we want to have is how to not get in the position we're in next year. After we make these difficult budget decisions that we've got to make, that we have to make in our department, which essentially is staff. So really our choices have had to been. Made or directed have come down to me and this is what is required that I need to do in regards to our staffing is they're quite painful. So we don't want to get to this spot ever again if, yes, sir.
Have you been directed to lay people off?
We're directed to cut positions.
That doesn't.
There's two different.
People off, yes. Yeah.
Who, who authorized laying people on?
Department heads were directed by the budget officer. Who cut positions.
That doesn't have to come to the board?
It will be coming to the board with.
You were part of the budget presentation.
We can question and change the budget, vote on different things.
I, I said it at the meeting last week. Notice this is true. Just sure so you don't go, I'm shit. It's like get a little bit passionate about something. We've got, you told me somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety hotel rooms we pay for at night. And we're going to put our people out on the street. You know, and. I don't know about anybody else, but I wasn't talked to about it. I know the board layoffs been thrown around quite a bit, but. We're going to end up having people. That were working for us needing the services that we're providing.
That's correct.
And. It blows my mind that we're, you know, we're talking about laying people off. I. And.
Well, and I'll, some of my points, I appreciate that very much because that's actually what we're going through right now. I mean. So I'll be frank, it's one of the things that we have done. Is this initiative is coming down and we're seeing what we have to do in regards to positions. We're telling people now. We're telling people that if things were, if the budget was to go exactly the way where the directive is right now. This is what would happen to the following people and we're going around and we're letting these people know because they deserve to know what's going on. They did, they deserve to have advocacy from our department. They need to not, you know, they need time to plan. Two months is a lot easier than finding out after the November twenty first, or maybe that they may be. Have their position eliminated on December thirty first. So those are discussions that we're currently having with our staff. The awful, awful conversations. I will tell you that to tell a single mom. That she is not going to, may not have a job on December thirty first is a difficult time. And when she did nothing wrong, right? When this person did nothing wrong in her service provision. The work that she's doing is the work that not only often that we see are required for her in a position, but she's, you know, going above and beyond. And a couple of the conversations that I've had with these folks yesterday, they're actually saying, well, what's going to happen with the transportation piece for our clients? They're actually thinking about the people we're serving above themselves, which is quite remarkable when you think about it. So, you know, before and into some of that piece, I'm sorry, I hope I didn't interrupt you.
No, I, you know. I, I just, I hope that the majority of this board is with me. Because we're out of other people's money. And we need to start providing assistance at a level that we can afford to provide assistance. And putting our people out on the street should be the last thing on our list. Eliminate positions that aren't filled. Okay. But. I.
So just to add to that, so and you'll get, I believe the budget officers are going to put forward a list of the positions that are being cut from the budget. I believe that's going to be with the tentative budget on Friday. The directive to Dwayne was to cut, I believe, twenty.
Three.
Twenty three positions. So some of those are vacant and some of those are filled positions.
Elaborate a little, as I understand it, being very new here, this is the process that. Is to be followed, then we review that and can reject it or modify it. If I'm not mistaken. And this was not done. This is just done by one person, budget officer through the process. He's looking at it through his eyes and only his eyes without consultation of others necessarily.
And that's to get that budget number down. To a number that was.
And as, as you know, there's a, there's revenue attached. To this. Now, if you're cutting the preparation, you're also cutting a portion of the other. So there's a cost across the board of this. I'm sorry.
I understand exactly where you're coming from, Scott. However, I'm part of an organization, of many organizations. As hard as it is. Are having to write size. And. My organization and a lot of other organizations are in fact doing layoffs. I'm not saying. It's not difficult. It is. But we as a board have to decide. Where we want to be in terms of the size of the organization. And what we're willing to ask taxpayers to pay. And that's a balance that is very difficult. But, but we do have to. We do have to make that decision and it could mean layoffs.
I think that. We could write size through pressure. And. I just, we shouldn't be notifying people that they're going to lose their job at Christmas. We should be notifying people, able bodied people. That we're out of other people's money and you're going to have to find another place to stay. It, it's. I don't know. It blows my mind that we went, we go five million dollars over budget last year out.
We ended up with point seven in total.
So. Almost eight million dollars. In housing. The bill is put on our, our county, which is not a rich county. And now we're laying off our people just to make the situation worse. I. I have dead set against that.
Commissioner of the twenty three, do you know how many of those positions are filled and how many of them vacant?
I believe we're looking at probably fifteen or sixteen that are filled. We, you know, one of the things we were able to give up, the vacancies, which is helpful, which saves people, right? So giving up the position. So that's something that we're very mindful of.
So what, and you know, I know I said this before, but I can't draw it up on memory bank here as we speak. How many actual vacancies you have down there?
I believe there's seven, somewhere on that.
Thank you. Sue, you have a question?
Is there any retirements going to go along with those vacancies?
I'm sorry.
Is there any retirements that could go along with those vacancies?
Possibly, I mean, the way the civil, you know, I'm learning too, how the civil service piece works, how, you know. People bump down, et cetera, because what I've been asked to do is, is make these changes from the very top down. So filling directors. Everybody will feel some, you know, or not everybody, but there's a considerable amount of folks that will feel some. Or all the way down.
Pushing the other. Yes, sorry. The other point would be is we've been working really hard in the last few years to. For retention and to be able to hire. And this. He's here, doesn't send for the message because what we're doing is. We're saying, yes, come to work for us. Or maybe we can even notice because.
But I don't know what's going to happen in ten months. Correct? But, and who knows if I have a mass exodus during this process afterwards is a concern, right? Why, you know, I'm going to lose faith in a lot of folks that I truly believe in.
Cassie then, Bob.
What's going to be the unemployment expense tied to this?
It's, I wouldn't even dare take a stab supervisor because. In today's world, I don't know how many people can live on unemployment. So even the people that are laid off, I assume are going to try to find other. Gainsful employment. So I can't really take a shot at what. What our exposure is.
It was just increased, right? It'll be the eighty hundred dollars. Well, then then wrap around and bring in different costs going to get added to the budget. And how many? Is that report going to also include how many of these positions that were vacant? What the net is losing or savings for the vacant position and what is the net cost, the revenue loss? And that, and the employee law, the cost for the employee and the cost for the revenue for the people that were laying off. I'd like to see that. And I'd also see, like, see the figures for the revenue loss and the savings. For the people, for the positions we're eliminating for vacancies.
If it's a million dollars, if it's a million dollars in the saving, you're really saving about four hundred thousand, plus sixty percent reimbursement funding rate.
Right. You'll see those numbers.
Bridge position. I like, I'd like to see if this is what we lost or saved and lost for the vacancies across the board for the county. And what further recommended layoffs. I'd like to see it that way. Not this is our overall baby. Because if there's revenue type positions and it's thrown in with positions that have no revenue tied for, we can't really see where the advantage is. Do you understand what I'm asking? That would be a budget money person type thing. I don't know. Is that something?
He has those numbers.
I know, but I'd like to see them.
I think they're available. I think they've been included in the. I think they're available, I think they've been included in the.
I don't think it's gonna be exact yet, but.
Yes.
There is, I don't think it's your department, but I'm trying to direct my question to Melissa and Al because. You guys are working for Brian and I'd like to make sure that those things are included, I think.
What is what?
What is what? I don't wanna see it in the group.
We'll do that. Chairman, and then Dave, I think you've gone and contributed something.
Yeah. Mine's a. A full thought and sort of a question for them down the road here, but it seemed to me like. Way these. These uh. I, I don't call it right sizing, because it's not shrinking the department, it's just right sizing, it's just a. Words trying to make everybody feel better, it's not right sizing, it's shrinking, shrinking our workforce. Uh, but it's kind of uh. I'm not gonna say irrational, but not, not very focused. Say, we're not gonna fill vacancies and. And I want you to start here and cut this one out. And a lot of discussion over the past about five years or so. And a lot of it's focused on DSS about how the title work. Danielle's been coming into us. Anyway, with. With the things saying, hey, this person's working out of tight, let's hell yeah, we gotta modify the grade, we gotta. Gotta change the job title, we gotta do this sort of thing. Uh, looks like we could have a whole lot of fallout with that. We hear things like, yeah. Yeah, Donnie just said, well, you know, this guy says he'll pick up this other person's work on, whatever, maybe he will, but maybe it's out of title work. I think down there with the, not in the hierarchy, but the, the several different overlapping programs. Well, we gotta be really careful about how to try to work. People start filing grievances, they exploit the cost of everything we've saved.
And more.
And more, so I, I just, just as we're thinking about it, and that's nothing to talk about or not. Direct to Dwayne to try and answer me now, I mean, that's silly, but there's something we gotta bear in mind because uh. You know, if we've already annoyed people by. Bumping them down towards regrades, a certain area, I think very well to. To continually do the same work they were doing when they were hired, when they were higher paid.
But they won't.
Or they won't.
Why would they?
Yeah, why would they?
Right. I think, so that's a lot to ask from someone.
So I'm looking at this. Another way. We've got. A large number of people come here for homelessness. And we don't know what's gonna happen this year. Upcoming year. We just don't know. But I think if we learn the lesson. We should learn the lesson that. We need to audit these people better. We need to make sure we're checking on people. And I won't get into this, but Nick passed out a piece of paper yesterday, he said, suggesting things which you're doing. To audit those people on the list to make sure they're. Doing the things they want. To me, the question is, if we are doing this, we may or may not be doing some of these things, I don't know. But. If we reduce our staff to the bottom. How many of these things are under the radar? We were not checking on because we don't have the manpower, the time we have to do it.
That's correct.
That's my concern. And my concern is, you may save. One hundred thousand dollars, three hundred, one hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is. But maybe in a proximity of this. More, and I'd like to find out what that impact would be. Because we still have plenty of services. There's a lot of services there that are way past homelessness, like child protection services, foster aging, meals on wheels. There, there, there's so many other programs that really help the people in need. And I'm not saying. We don't consider position. But we do have to consider the impact, what it's gonna do to our budget. In the long term, not just tomorrow and solve immediate problem. I know it's hard to think about tax increase. But. It's as hard to think about what may be the impact. In right sizing our budget. The way we are, without taking consideration to the long term, I go back to when we went to five miles row, what did it cost along with? It saves us immediately, but it costs a lot more down the road. So I'd like to find out more answers on that, I don't, and Wayne, but. Be a good discussion to have in the theory, theory discussion.
I could, and I, I appreciate that very much, because I just was made privy to the handout there this morning, I appreciate um. Supervisors that have given me some of this information, I can't tell you after breezing through it literally on our way up here, that we do a lot of those. Uh, those things, um, it would hinder us to lose people to be able to follow through on this, we would rather get to this through efficiencies. And um, you know, be known as a, a hand up. Agency instead of a handout agency, that's something that we're committed to driving. Our, our staff to doing, and I believe that they're already there, these are things that they wanna do, um. So, a- and I think the job that I have is interesting, and I'm gonna try to bridge these things together, is that, you know. Supposed to, you know, create less disconnect from our supervisors in the community to what we do. Um, I know that I could probably do better at that. Um, my job also is to advocate for and manage my staff, and that's something that I take very serious, I, I see. You know, as I, I go through um. Every single person's area, every single morning, morning at eight oh five. I don't see anybody, you know, on break, uh, people come in and they feral down to work, they've, they've got, you know. Serious workloads and they're doing everything they can, I can tell you that, um. So, um, and be fiscally responsible to our, our county taxpayers and our, that's something too that we take very seriously. Um, what we wanna do, and hopefully with your help, is set goals to achieve. Uh, better service provision and save money and ensure that we're holding people accountable that are receiving services. I'd also like to provide an avenue to these tough times for our staff to be able to communicate somehow. Uh, to folks and tell you what, exactly what they're seeing or what they're feeling. Um, they're coming to me now saying, hey, can I, can I come to HHS today? And I'm like, well, you know. Let, let's not do that right now, let's make sure that we're collective, making sure that we. Understand that we're doing every, we can to provide the services for our community. You know, we currently live in a, in a community that with over forty percent uh of our folks. Are living paycheck to paycheck, and just like you had said, I don't wanna add to that, um, we do have people. Um, that work for us, um, hardworking folks that, that do qualify currently. For services that, that we provide, um. Fraud investigation, right, so I did see on social media, um, that, you know. Department of Social Services were basically getting penalized for, you know, the Washington County Sheriff's Office put up that they caught somebody that was committing fraud, collecting services from two different states. A lot of people don't understand that those fraud investigations begin in our department. Right? You know, we, we certainly appreciate the sheriff's help in getting to the resolution for it and making sure that people are not. Um, you know, collecting services they, they shouldn't receive. I see just dedicated, caring, compassionate staff that uh would, would much rather see us. Uh, get to some of our budget goals through efficiencies and policy change, um. The uh, you know, the community's angered right now, although justified, right, under tax increases, things like that. Um, we need to focus where we need to do our advocacy at a state and federal level. Uh, we need policy change on some of these mandates, reimbursements, um. We, if, if we, if we cut ourselves, um. Out from underneath. Ourselves as far as staffing and we can't get, you know, our caseloads get too big, um, we don't get reports in timely. We could get penalized. And the penalties just don't happen at Department of Social Services, they could penalize the entire county. That's something that knew that I, I've learned. I'm gonna ask other board supervisors to, when you have the ability or the time, which I know everybody's busy. When we do have uh trainings, like the bridges training that I offered up, um, I'd really like to see it. And I'll see if you can come and attend some of these, meet some of our folks and understand. The folks that we're serving, I think may help us too. Um, get to know some of our folks, that all these folks that we're having these tough conversations with, that they have names. Um, they have families, they have children. They have homes that they're afraid of losing, I just want us to make sure we recognize, I know we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions. You know, I'm not just going on. But I just hope that we are making sure that we take every avenue possible. To consider the ramifications of folks that are, that are out there doing the work. The other thing too is if we um. Cut our staff significantly, are we endangering our folks when they go out to do visits? You know, because we're short staffed and they have to go out alone or something like that. Um, safety is a big, huge concern for our staff. So, you know, I'm, I'm eager to work with all of you, come to some of these resolutions, see how we can make our department better, more efficient, save money. You know, but I hope it's not o- only to the expense of our people, um. Our, our Washington County folks that are, we can buy, just like everybody else. So please, uh, I'm sorry, Al.
Go ahead.
Please, you know, when you're, you're looking for information from me going forward, uh, you know. Put it out there, send me emails, say, hey, I'd like, you know, I'd like to see this, if it makes me, I like to see this number, this data point. Whatever it might be, because it'll help us set goals, right, it'll help us say, we gotta get that number down, how do we do that? And I think we could do that collectively. As, you know, the only, the only thing that's gonna save uh Washington County. Is Washington County. Uh, we have to recognize that, we're, we're, we're gonna have to save ourselves here, uh, and it's in these crises.
I'm gonna just circle back to where you just went back to, where you started your conversation.
Okay.
So the, the, I think the easy. The audit committee had tasks for a report monthly at audit committee. Of the amount of payments that were made outside of the audit process. So a- as you and your staff know, I process what we call the briefcase a couple of times a week, right? Those are vouchers that do not go through our internal audit process. But are significant dollars to the county budget. And there's no, there's no board oversight to any of those expenditures.
Sure.
So there was, there was a request a couple of months ago. If there could be some kind of reporting to the audit committee of those. Those payments that were made.
We're talking about picks.
Right, the stuff comes up in the briefcase, your direct checks, indirect checks, and the blue and all that. So. Obviously not recipient names, right?
Right.
There's, there's information you can't share. But the financial piece, you know, um, there was eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in rental payments made for thirteen recipients. Those kinds of reports, I think you probably already have. Fairly readily. Um, the audit committee had kinda waiting to, to start seeing those.
So can't he report that to this committee, though? Would that be okay instead of him going to audit?
Yeah, the board, it was an audit that requested it, I don't care, I just, he asked about reporting.
Well, even we could sit down and really kind of hold it exactly what we're looking for, I'd be glad to provide it.
And if you wanna talk to Mr. Rizzo, whoever had originally requested it, I, I. I'm just, it just came back in my brain that there was a request to kind of see that transparency. Uh, because there was a concern that they don't ever see them. And some of them take their fiduciary responsibility very seriously, and there's millions of dollars going out that. They never see, so they, they'd like to at least be able to see that it happened and. And, and feel that they've fulfilled their fiduciary role as a supervisor.
Okay, yeah, I can certainly do that.
That, I think that's a low hanging fruit that we can easily accomplish.
So we'll set something up that gets more clarity on this.
Of course.
Thank you.
Wait.
Yes.
This, what I gave you. I, I know it's just a small portion of where we are in the county. What I've seen through this whole fall, all this whole process. Is every department has, every employee understands where we are and they're bending over backwards to get us through this spot. I don't ever wanna go through this, man. Last Friday, that war room was painful, to say the least. As a taxpayer. I feel for all those taxpayers and I also feel for the supervisors. Because there are a lot of difficult decisions to be made. But I think. I only wanna bleed one time. This time, I don't wanna bleed every single year. And I think if we don't approach this right, we are gonna be just kicking this can down the road. So this is gonna become the norm instead of the exception.
Agreed.
And I think that one thing that we can all agree on is that people coming through Hampshire or wherever to get benefits. It should be the first thing to go. Right out of the gate, because we as a county should take care of county residents, not. Alienate or whatever you wanna call them, people that weren't born and raised here, our responsibility is to the Washington County taxpayer.
Right.
Period, whether they're need assistance or they have. They're paying taxes, that's where our responsibility is. And I feel very strongly about what I gave you on this, because I think. Most of this stuff I would hope they're already implemented. But I think if we can make that process for them to come into this county as difficult as we possibly can. So that they wanna go somewhere else, that is something that doesn't cost us anything to do. And we make this a huge, make it their job. To get these benefits, then I think we're on the right track. So I don't wanna give them anything, just, and just let them sit around all day. And we all know what happens if everybody sits around all day and doesn't do anything constructive. It becomes a perpetual cycle that they can hardly ever break and never. Pay and rob all this money to send them to. For mandated. Restoration process.
Well, I, I hear you, what you said, I mean, I think that. That's really the stance with our staff too, is we wanna, we're Washington County Department of Social Services, right? So we'd like to stay that way, um, where we need help is some advocacy and change in policy, like I think from homeless where found.
But I, I, I understand that, and that's a nice thought. Well, I think we're all. No realists realize that help is not coming.
Yeah.
You know, you can't forget it, great, we're not gonna get it. And we have to think really outside this box.
We do.
In order to make this work, because we have to do some kind of obstacle where these people do not wanna come to Washington County. We cannot afford this in perpetuity.
Yeah, so this is helpful, the way we're discussing things in, in our department, um, with all of our folks. Is we're looking at this almost like we're calling it like phase one and phase two, phase one, we gotta get through this budget process, right? You gotta figure out how we light the ship to a degree, and then phase two is how do we not get here? How do we start to look at like what you gave me, how could we really hone in on what we're supposed to be doing? And that's gonna be our focus, that starts as soon as we can get to this first process, but. Right now, I mean, my concern is, you know, my, my staff, I gotta get them through these, this next month or two.
If I might. Or you wanna jump in?
If, if I may.
You may.
Um, I actually have a couple of things for you, we talked yesterday. About turning one of our buildings that is gonna be vacant. Into a homeless shelter. Our idea is to partner with a not-for-profit. Which is gonna help us with. Regulations, I think they might be a little bit softer on the, on a not-for-profit and. And uh, then we support the not-for-profit. And, and process of keeping, you know, people off the streets, um. I, I guess this is more of a statement than anything, I would, I would. Like you to think about that and uh. Maybe we could talk again about it, um. This is the long-term solution, I think. And from what I've read. You. You, you can have for single people. You can have a dorm-style setting. Three feet between beds, you have a side of a, a bed frame and mattress and windows. But. I think. That is gonna. Push us in the right direction. Uh, I think it's a lot more comfortable to sit in a hotel room and watch cable TV. Than. To actually have to, alright, this is where I stay and now I gotta go do something.
Well, plus you can have the services wrapped around there to move them out of, out of the shelter into private housing, which is critical.
Right.
And I did, you know, some of the emails started coming through yesterday in regards to that, which I think we're definitely on the right track. Warren County is currently having those discussions and, and gonna do a family shelter, which is gonna save the. County taxpayers money in the long run, it gets the services and get people moved out of homelessness, that's the key. I will tell you that, um, in New York State, unlike Code Blue. Is that when you do have shelter, that there are certifications that you have to go through that can be difficult, but it's not. It's that insurmountable, for example, there is a square footage, um, requirement per bed per person, so I think it's sixty square feet. Each person has to have in a bedroom, so, you know, and doing the math. It was gonna have bunks, but you can't put, for example, three sets of bunk beds in a twelve by twelve room, you gotta be able to have that square footage, so. This, this can be done, and I think you're definitely on the right track to start to think outside. This, this can be done, and I think you're definitely on the right track to start to think outside the box. Because we have to, we have to stay in the long term and some of the services are gonna have to provide or, or pay for. It will save us money. Yes.
I had one more thing.
Sure.
Um. I heard last week that the state. I think the term was clawback, eight hundred thousand dollars. So the state just came in and took eight hundred thousand dollars out of our bank account, is that?
What they do is they just, they reduce a claim that I have out, so. I send them a bill for a million dollars and they say, here's two hundred thousand, thank you for having a nice day. So they don't come pulling from me, they just reduce a claim that I have out.
We are looking at the. Ways to deal with that. You know, all night or. Back into a certain extended and put them together on. But we may, I may drop my last charge off any minute.
You would have said it to your commissary, Phil.
What is the reason, Scott's question? What is the reason it's clawback? We submit proper paperwork improperly?
I don't believe so.
What, and, and, and I'm only speaking from what I understand, what I understand, because this happened last year as well. Right, so last year's clawback was through September of twenty-three. My guess without knowing the facts is this is probably through September of twenty-four. What happens? You have to, you have to provide services, you don't get to stop providing services. Then all of a sudden, you get this thing from the state, from OTDA or OCFS, usually OTDD. I think it's the Title Twenty stuff that really messes with us. Um. All of a sudden, they say, hey, wait, you went over your ceiling that you didn't know. You see, you have a ceiling and you don't know what it is. But they tell you when you've hit it a year later. So my understanding of the clawback is you paid out eight hundred thousand dollars more. And aid the people than your ceiling that you didn't know you had.
Right.
That's my understanding of the clawback.
That, that's my. And you need, if I want to expand on that at all, or that's?
No, I, he's, he got it.
Yeah.
Does everybody have the same level of clawback all counties?
No, ma'am.
No, it's formulaic, just like sales tax, it's distributed.
And even if they, my understanding also, to make it worse, even if they know what their ceiling is. They still can't stop providing the service when they hit the ceiling.
Yeah.
That, that it makes no sense at all.
I wonder if they're, because they're so far behind. I've run into this before, but not necessarily at the state. But if they have X amount of dollars and their clawback is so late, so they have X amount of dollars. And they look at everything and they say, well, this county's working, then they do the formula for the counties and they say, oh. We only have this much money, so that's where they come up with the, the ceiling, that there is no way to calculate it ahead of time. Because then they're going, well, we only have six million on eight million dollars worth of bills we need to pay out, so this is the formula we're gonna use for each county. They have the formula there, and so you only get that money. Like in some programs with the government, federal government. It's out there, but they will only pay you, if you're entitled to a hundred dollars, they'll only pay eighty dollars to make sure that everybody gets some money. And then at the end, they square up like a year later and say, okay, well, this much money wasn't used. Here, you get another seven percent of the hundred percent who are entitled to. But I wonder if the state was working on the same type of, we only have this much money, then we review it a year later. We figure out we're short this much, so they use whatever formula it is they have in their back pocket. For the ceiling they now created and pay out that way, and it still isn't gonna help us.
And what I won't know, what I won't know until we go to Albany is. If it, if it's the, the uh, non-alignment of our, our fiscal years. So we're on a calendar year, and then I think what happens is in April first of the following year, we find out what the funding was. That was appropriated for the year that we just completed, so. We've already let the horse out of the barn by the time we find out how much the hay's gonna cost. But, but, but what's, what's worse about the eight hundred thousand is we're talking about that one clawback. When I look at the, the Title Twenty claims that go in monthly. I see Becky submitting one point or one point five million and consistently there's a three, four hundred thousand dollar adjustment. Monthly. So it's, this, this eight hundred thousand is in addition to. Those, those denials that are happening on the regular monthly claims.
Hmm.
So in no, at no time are we getting all of what we're claiming, and that's disturbing.
And, and we're gonna be in trouble finding out what office it is, it's making this.
OTDA, I can tell you what office.
I know, we gotta, we gotta find a body.
A person.
Yeah.
Is the eight hundred thousand dollars for one program or all the programs?
We're, we're waiting to find that out.
So we don't know that.
We don't know yet.
An issue.
The, the other thing, the other thing that gives me a little bit of peace, not enough to be comfortable. But some of it will be refunded through other programs.
Hmm.
Some of the, some of the denials will be refunded through places where there are some funding. But it could be, it could have been seventy-five percent fundings, because they're gonna refund all through a twenty-nine percent fund. So the eight hundred won't remain eight hundred, is my understanding, but it might still be seven.
Hmm.
My, my understanding is you'll get some of that, through some other program. But probably safety net up.
Oh, if they can set a ceiling, why don't we? You know.
That's the way we're structured. That's the way the state government for services is structured.
Because what would be nice, Mr. Han, if we knew the ceiling, if we knew the state's ceiling? We stopped at their ceiling, that'd be one of them. But I, we can't.
Can't stop.
And we're out of other people's money. We gotta stop somewhere. And this is, this is absolutely ridiculous. That the state has pinned us in a corner like this. It's, it's making us go broke, it's making people move out of our county, people move out of our state. And somebody has to stand up and say enough.
Because if I'm, if I'm even close, Mr. Han, we're gonna believe another two point three million this year. In, in that department. And I don't know that you can stop it, if, if this current.
And the state's gonna run a thirty-four billion dollar deficit to two thousand twenty-nine. The state's broke. You guys all know that, right? They're broke. We're gonna continue to pass these costs out. Keep voting blue in the state of New York and you're going to continue to get what you're getting, because these are the same people they've been voting in office year after year. And they led this to this, we have the highest debt burden in the US right now.
Yeah, we are.
We're in trouble.
And you know that.
And it could get a lot worse, depending on how November goes.
Say it.
We should print our own currency. Cassie, and then let's bring this back on topic and move on a little bit.
Because we all know that everybody under this sun is watching us now, and half of them are gonna walk away from this conversation, we're saying. DSS doesn't know why they lost eight hundred thousand. We need to make it clear. That that's not what happened. The state took the money because the state decided they could take the money and they have not yet informed. DSS or Al why they decided to take the money. So it's the state that said that it's not mistakes by our department, it's the state. Because of the way everybody talks around, and then somebody will stop you later to say, oh, GSS doesn't know what they did with eight hundred thousand, that's not what happened. The state decided to take it and haven't told any of us why. And they won't send that for a while, because they're probably still figuring out why they suddenly do what.
This is no fact, this is no factor of any internal employee.
No, right, that's the part I want to make clear, that anybody that's watching us understands that it's not the department's fault, it's state's fault.
I think I can only control what I can control, and that's downstairs. Right, we can control how to become more efficient. How to do the, the best job that we can, how to support our, the people that we're supposed to be serving in our, you know. Support our staff, how to support you guys, that's all I can do. I can't do a lot of this detail.
Right.
Yes.
Um, right, I really think the legal draft is wonderful. Um, I would love to see one from DSS regarding. How many adults are homeless, individual adults, how many families are homeless?
I, I think, I think we're gonna build a dashboard that, and it'll be very interesting. Because once we find out more, we'll add more to it, I think.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, will we? And. Any more? Comments or?
I just think that would be, would be helpful, because I think that you kind of think of us, Washington County, individualized. But you have seventeen towns in that, in the county. That could actually provide communities around services a little bit. You touched on that and food. Okay, regarding your food pantries, are there's other kinds of support? You know, you've got, almost, you look around every single town and there's. Many houses that are on that. You know, why not work towards? Maybe a grant that would provide the weatherization, not a, not a. Really beautiful hospital, people that they could open it up, as they're putting. Buying sort of another property that is. I work in that network. Now, you get the kids back in school. And I, they have a beauty support program where they're. And look more creatively. You, this, this is absolutely great, separate from doing. This is the same tempo. Absolutely the same template, like others of the. So, let's go to the state and think, well. Are you using what is? Could be beneficial long-term? So, this, doesn't work.
I'd like to bring us back to where we started with Scott's question and what we're about to be facing in a couple of days. Because. This department is being faced with a draconian dictate on cut. And it's clear that that cut has impacts that maybe aren't understood by the cut. And that suggestions. We as a board are gonna have to be very mindful of. What Sue just brought up and what Bob's brought up, these are people in our county that they may be. Turning around any services at the same time, these are the people, if they're not there, won't be able to stop us from having this problem next year. I'm not saying we shouldn't be smaller. But going smaller this way, I guess, is that way, the way public sector has to do it, you just cut everybody at once? Or can you manage through the actual process that gives you in the long run where you need to be? Wayne mentioned step one, step two. Step one, done well, makes step two possible. Step one done poorly makes no step two. And we're facing that with our budget decisions that we need to focus on. Later in the week.
Yeah.
And next month.
I think you have to understand that I'm gonna have these conversations now, that's fair to that, that was. It's not fair, I think, what's happening when somebody didn't do anything wrong, but it's a job. You know, as far as things like that, I'm not gonna wait to have this conversation. No. Day before Thanksgiving or something like that, that's just, that's just not the way to be, is this. So, um, if you would, as we, as we have these discussions, whether it's, you know, talking about. Shelter or, or what reports you folks would like to see from, um, our department. It would probably be better if we could funnel them to, um, the chair.
That would help streamline the work, because one of the reasons you don't have and the Audit Committee doesn't have. What they've asked for is they've been too busy doing other things that are under the. Fire right now with the budget, otherwise we would be having those numbers, I think, earlier. So.
He had asked, so I just wanted to bring it back up.
Good point. Thank you. You guys?
Just wanted to add one thing, um. I guess to piggyback on what Wayne was just saying. So even though we have departments that are talking to employees about possible cuts that could be happening at the end of the year. We have also talked about the importance to say that nothing is certain until the board votes on that budget and these. Uh, positions that that's been finalized. So we're giving people the heads up. Um, but nothing is finalized till that budget is passed and you all vote on it. Um, we do have a huge concern about retention and recruitment. Supervisor Feder talked about it a little while ago, because five years ago, we started to fix. Our retention and work on our recruitment, so we've just taken steps backwards. Um, we're not giving raises, we don't pay comparable wages to start with. So that's gonna affect our retention, um, and our recruitment is gonna be right there, so. Lot of concern about what positions are gonna leave in the next couple of months and how we're gonna fill them and provide the services that we provide to the communities.
If I just may add two last things that, you know, uh. We, we need to show that our staff are supported by everyone, sides. Myself and our directors and Gina, amazing job and. Helpless process out, um, but. The narrative out there is not healthy for our staff. Um, I did have a staff member that was confronted because they were driving a car, because of our dial stores. Um, that may be very uncomfortable for them. I will also tell you one other thing is that. After the Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, or during the Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, an individual stood up and, and said that. Um, there was witness fraud with heat, where this is a quote, that there was somebody with a Cadillac Escalade. Two jet skis and four snowmobiles in their driveway and they were receiving heat and fuel. The very next day, I called that individual and I said, I had the fuel, uh, delivery service, um, owner. The driver, if you have his name, and I have the address and the name of this person that's committing this fraud, and I will open up an investigation right now. I got nothing. So what am I supposed to do with that? But the narrative is out there. We're handing out free money, free oil, whatever it might be, and I wanna, if this really happened. I will open up an investigation immediately. But. Who is it? Been a couple of weeks and I got nothing. So please think about that, okay? When the narrative gets circulated, because my, my folks are getting beat up. Getting beat up.
Well, I'll say, say we're all getting beat up right now.
True.
And it's just not your department, we're all taking you.
Agreed.
Uh. In the month, the next meeting, do you think you could have kind of a synopsis of what programs? On this paper I handed, you are being. Implemented or you're looking at. So we have a starting point where we are right now. But right now, we're applying a body to supervisors.
I'll provide you anything, okay? Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that anyone wants to bring forward in committee? And I'll take a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.